Tonight you will hear several celebrations from our Black Village Family Advisory Committee, as well as suggestions and recommendations to the board. Rest assured, the recommendations align with our plan in HSD to move forward for all our students and our community. The suggestions, our reflections, are reflected in our new strategic plan, as well as individual school reports and plans. In partnership with our Black Village Family Advisory, we work to help elevate their voices in HSD while allowing them the opportunity for advocacy. So without further ado, you guys are on. Do we have this slide show ready?
Okay.
I was waiting.
We can go to the next slide. So this is almost all of our board, only missing two people. So our board is Soray, hi everyone, as our chair, and Olson as our vice chair.
Hi there.
Anna couldn't make it tonight, she's on kid duty. And then there's me, Shira. And finally, we have two non-voting members because they are school district employees. We have David and Jemai also did not make it tonight. We can go to the next slide. So our mission, as Fran so eloquently put it, is to advocate for the needs of the families and the students who identify as Black or in part as Black in Hillborough School District. We can go to the next slide. And we do this through monthly meetings. We kind of, they're pretty informal. We try to invite HSD employees to come and kind of talk about the programs that they're involved with and how it can help our community and also be open to questions and suggestions from our community. And so on there, we have a few of our meetings. We go to the next slide. David will take it away.
Yes, as she mentioned, my name is David Steinhour. I am the Black Village Facilitator. And I brought my handy notes here as well. So for those who don't know me, I am a parent of an elementary age student here in the Hillborough School District, an original and current member of the Black Village since its inception three years ago. And as of this past November, an employee with the Hillborough School District, and Hillborough School District, as a family and student engagement liaison, primarily focusing on our Black biracial community. As part of my role, I've had the opportunity to participate in individual and group efforts aimed at improving the educational experience and outcome for our children, as well as providing support and resources for all families in our community. Although everything is not perfect, I am pleased to know that many of the recommendations being suggested to you all this evening have already been in motion. As you will see in the upcoming slides, there's a lot to celebrate, in addition to areas where we have heard need more attention. We are committed to working collaboratively with the school board and administration to ensure that all students, especially those in our Black biracial community, have access to equitable educational opportunities and resources that support their success and growth. So thank you for having us here. Next slide. So here we can highlight some of the achievements that we at the village, in partnership with the district and many other teammates or partners as well, have achieved. And so the first one is, we've held a couple of book readings so far. One last year that we held at, I believe it was the Brooklyn Library. And then most recently, we partnered with Pointer Middle School and held a book reading, and really kind of an activity gathering at the Pointer Middle School Library, which was well received by our families. And then next you can see, we started our first middle school Black Student Union at Pointer Middle School. And that has just been a great opportunity. In fact, one of our board members' daughters is in that Black Student Union there. And I've had the honor, yes, yes, yes. Oh, that's fine. Yeah, that's great. Sorry. But I've had the honor to partner with the BSU sponsor, the Pointer Middle School, and help them to create a safe and welcoming space for the students there. And really been enjoying that. Another hit that we had this past year was the BSU College Expo Trip, where we've had several HSD employees that actually attended. Got a bus full of students, I believe. There were 78 or so students that packed the bus. Their parents brought them off, absolutely ecstatic. The feedback that we received afterwards was, you know, the parents were just as excited as the students were. And I want to say we gave out, or three of our students received scholarships at that event. And that's one that we hope to do each year, that opportunity presents itself. And then down there below, the Black History Month event. And that was the first event that, again, we partnered with the Hillborough School District and the Black Village put together. There are a few board members who were in attendance as well. So appreciate you for showing up there. But that event, there was huge interest in that. Our initial plan was to have it at the Hidden Greek Community Center and then moved it over to Liberty High School to partner with them. And even partnered with their culinary team, who provided some snacks there as well. And then moving on to other events and guild trips, we had a Black Student Success Summit that we provided transportation to several of our students. And that was, I believe, just last month. And that was just a day trip in Portland, Oregon, but we supported them with that event. And some of the other things too, when I mention other events, is being able to partner with our Black Student Unions, in particular our high schools, as they were putting together assemblies and support them with the process with that. And then next is our emoji Black Graduation Celebration. And this is one where the Black Village partnered up with the Beaverton Black Parent Union to come together to put a celebration together for our Black grads for 2023. And that's going to take place at the Reeser Auditorium, I think it's called, on June 2nd. And that's one where, you know, our board members, they connected with the Beaverton Black Parent Union and just, you know, collaborated efforts, putting that much together. Next slide, please. Moving on, our BSU support and sponsor support. And again, you know, I lean heavily into the Black Village Board. It is extremely helpful being part of HSD. I've learned a ton. But I've had the opportunity to develop a lot of relationships, some strong relationships with our Black students, along with our sponsors, and supporting them as they engage and create this opportunity for our Black students to come together during the day. Some of those student groups meet after school. But just been able to provide an added voice and presence and, you know, a person that looks like them as well. And then moving along to equity and collaboration with SROs. You know, I was granted to take part in some equity work. And I think we had six sessions or so, I made it to three. But that, again, was just an opportunity to work closely and develop those relationships. I know for me in particular, when I'm out of schools and able to see them and talk with them, I think that it's been extremely helpful for the district as a whole. And then lastly is our Student Mentorship Program, which is, you know, been a priority now in working collaboratively with our family engagement team here. I mean, when I talk about relationships, the work with, you know, Dorte and team. Oregon's got a great team. For many of these events that we've had, just asking for support and volunteers, I mean, this team just steps up every single time. And even with the student mentorship, been working with Alex and Salo and some others, because they're doing a mentorship for LYD right now. Currently, I'm mentoring one student at the middle school level, which has been great. And we're still, yeah, again, just in the process of building that out. We see a need for it and we're here to provide. Anything you all want to add? All right, sweet. Next slide.
Hey, hi there, Olson Miller. So what we'd like to see from the board, you know, I kind of wanted to premise aloud what we ask for, it's kind of like curb cuts, you know, and if you're familiar with curb cuts, they're making accessibility on sidewalks for all. And when we think about the things that the Black Village is asking for, yes, we are parents for Black students and Black identified students, but we believe that a lot of what we're asking for will benefit all students. So when we ask, it's not just for the small percentage of students, it's for what will benefit all. Next slide, please. All right, so continuing with our equity and inclusion, keeping it a priority, right? The Equity, Access and Engagement Team has done such amazing work and we don't want to see that work undone. When I say that, it's truly a matter of, you know, Fran and her team, you know, we value the work that they've put in, we just want to see more. So in fact, we want more of it, right? Their work is vital to our students feeling supported and succeeded. You know, as a parent, I absolutely want my child, well, I keep saying child, I only have one, my favorite. I really want my daughters to truly feel that within Hillsborough School District, even when I'm no longer an ed chair in that space, that they have ed cares and individuals looking out for them and see them for who they are. I will tell you, my older daughter loves being a part of the ESU at Pointer. And it's something where I didn't have to force her to sign up. It was immediately where she said, wow, they're going to do this. It's not everything she wants yet. But then this is where she's thinking of, okay, when I go onto Liberty, I know what work needs to continue being done. Right, so some of the goals, we'd like to see the board set some equity goals for the district and additional supports for schools that don't reach their goals. You know, it's for ed cares or in education, you always want to have something measurable. So when we say goals, is where then you can see if the work is being done and if it isn't, what areas need to be improved. We'd like to see the districts continue investments in equity, access and engagement, in the engagement team with funds and additional positions. That was add in my own, because wherever I travel, I say this. If it was a faith-based thing, like, you know, you're going to talk about giving your tithes and offerings, you pay that up first before you pay your bills. That's part of, you know, when I think about my faith. That's important to me, so I'm going to put my money there first. So we're looking for something along the lines of showing your investment in that area. We'd like there to be more equity learning opportunities for staff. I know there is, there's always learning opportunities. We'd like them to be more specifically, not just here is material, but we want to say, this is my expectation and here's the training and time and equity work not being additional on the plate of ed cares. We know we're going through a time where ed cares are experiencing major burnout and stress and the workload is heavy. They're carrying our future on their shoulders. And it would be great if that future they were carrying didn't always mean that they have to give up something that they really passionately know our kids need in order to get moving forward. So it's a matter of, I think, what can be taken off the plates? Realistically taking off our ed cares plates so that they can lean into this work a little bit more. Next slide. All right, more educational liaisons focused on Black students. David is off to a great start. But David said, told me that he was going to work for the district. I said, go for it, even as I was leaving, I'm like, go for it. Because I know the value of having a Black male ed chair in the space. So I definitely see the value of having David walking into all the different high schools and the spaces that he's able to. So we know the district is working on retaining and recruiting more staff and ed cares of color and that is still very much needed. This is an additional ask that we make to make sure that our Black students feel welcomed in our schools. You know, being part of the 1%, and sometimes, and I know in the state of Oregon, even with the recruitment retention efforts, you know, Black ed cares make up 0.7%. That's less than 1% in the entire state. And in Hillsborough, we've got ways to go. And I know that other districts, they have similar goals, which means if we want to recruit above the districts around us, we need to offer something more.
And just to add on that one, because I know in a previous meeting we had, we had brought up retention and representation. And, you know, I don't know if this is the place for it, but, you know, I would be curious too. So when we have meetings after this, like, if we had data available to even know. Because when I'm thinking, I don't know what that looks like, how many Black educators are Black versus hired on? And just, I think, for the sake of the conversation and moving forward, to really understand, okay, where do we sit as far as demographics for higher attrition rates?
So the other thing I ask for is a stronger anti-bullying campaign. I know that there's already an anti-bullying campaign in place with the district. And, you know, nobody likes bullying and is looked down upon. But there is definitely some racially-based incidents that are happening in our schools. And we need educators who feel like they can step in and stop it and speak up. We need better training for the educators to prevent it and speak up against racist incidents. And we need equitable responses so that when our students are pushed to the brink by these incidences, there's compassion for them. Because, you know, I mean, for lack of a better word, there's nothing you can say that's like the end word, if I'm being completely honest. And to have our students call that to their faces and then expect them to be calm and composed as teenagers with hormones and things, I think that's a lot to ask. If somebody were to come up and say that to me right now, it'd be a lot to ask me to just calmly sit there and take it. So, yeah, we just ask for compassion and really empowering teachers and educators, educating them so that they feel like they can step in and prevent it. We want the prevention that is more than the restitution afterward. Kind of going along with that, better access to mental health support. We need better training for teachers to recognize signs of distress, specifically how they show up in the Black community. And we need access to counselors of color and counselors who are able to deal with racial trauma. The suicide death rate among Black youths has been found to be increasing faster than any other racial group. So there's a huge need for this. And then Olson, you want to take last one?
Sure, sure. And I'll even add to the fact that, you know, as a district that has quite a bit of different trauma-informed spaces, you know, when you think about ACEs, racism is an ace. You know, I think sometimes when we talk about adverse ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, experiencing racist attacks and things like that, it does affect you. It does, it's something where you, for the rest of your life, you have certain memories and unfortunately, those memories are dependent on skin you're in to be based on racialized attacks. The last one is easiest ways to report incidents. We appreciate what the Equity, Access and Engagement Team has done to break down the barriers. And I will say, some of those are the fact that last year, when we were at this, similar to this meeting, a conversation we had was about how can we report incidents? There's more spaces and places where we can report it, but we still have more to do. And one of those big asks I continue to remember is, like, when we're in the spaces, sometimes it's a phone call that needs to happen. And since then, one of the conversations I've had in my own individual learning is, having it more places in a digital and in a text way still is not the most accessible. And, you know, when it comes to the fact that our families, we may need a phone call because if you can't get to the internet or access to that website, you know, it is important to then be able to make a phone call. Someone on the other line is taking my report. Because this is something where if it's happening, it's almost like a last step, okay, I'm frustrated, what do I need to do? Talk to someone, they're going to take the report, take it seriously, versus sending it off into Google Document. I know that there are some school districts that there's the app where teenagers are able to report themselves through the digital way, but their families still get to call. Because if my children are experiencing something like this, I hope that they would be able to come to me. I know that there's been incidents that they have reported to me, but also I know that there's things that they've probably not. Because they're like, okay, dads don't just be really upset again. And, you know, and they're in a space where they're thinking, as my daughter, they're protecting me from having to deal with it. You know, it still happens. As grown up, I know I experienced it, you know, even as an ed chair, I've experienced it in the district. So we really need to make sure that we step into a space where, how can we make sure that our families are asked, are able to report this? And I know that I heard similar things that was asked for by the Latinx PAC also. Just having more access to be able to report what our kids are feeling and what they're experiencing.
Next slide.
Thanks, thank you for allowing us to have this time here with you.
Thank you. Very much appreciate our time that we get to present to the district because our partnership has been one that is very valuable and we continue, we just continually hope that partnering with us means that you care enough to also make changes for us.
Thank you. Yeah, and I don't, you don't have this presentation in our area, do you?
It's there now.
Is there now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
All right, thanks.
Sincere, sincere, sincere thanks. It's good to see you guys again. It is difficult to not be in a meeting. And I just want to make sure that you all understand that part of the reason why I'm not there is because it has been said to me that sometimes being on the board can bring about pressure into what should be a safe space for parents. Because of my parents, it's different. It feels weird to not be able to participate like that. But please know that my heart and my support are always there. I definitely appreciate the fact that you're talking about looking, I think if I'm hearing you right, that I would like to know now more about what the feeling also is. And I think the back half of that is really about how the discipline comes to our children after. That's where some of the disparities are coming from. That's what I'm hearing from parents and I'm sure you're hearing as well. And Francesca, it's one of those things where it's not just, is it recognized and is it acknowledged? In the classroom, it's also the resulting discipline to the child, which despairingly goes toward the Black child that was involved in the incident. It just, it ends up that way. And so I think that's part of what we're looking at now and what we should be looking at. How does the disparity manifest itself in the discipline action that comes out in this result? And to their point, there shouldn't be a discipline action, especially in the case where a child was traumatized like that. If the situation were reversed, and I'm just going to say it, and we had a white child that was traumatized, there would be lots of work between them. And this is the case where we have to work on that disparity. So I just wanted to make sure that I kind of got into that point. It's not just the fact that we're acknowledging what is happening and that it would be nice if we had a teacher who's educated enough or just had enough heart to step in and say, this is not right and this should not be done, but also then support the child that has been traumatized and to make sure that they're not desperately disciplined. So thank you guys again. Thank you, thank you, thank you. If you need anything, just give me a call.
I did have a question. So this might be for the, I think we had a presentation when the flight team, oh, a few years ago, I think, one of the questions was around, is when an incident happened like this, does that team also respond when incidents like bullying or acts of racism happen to students? Do we know that? Is the flight team actively activated in response to that? And is that something that, I know that thinking about being culturally competent and where when kids are experiencing a traumatizing event, how we can wrap around them and support, is that something that we can?
I don't know if it would be the flight team that would respond, but I understand the concept you're running at. Is that there'd be individuals that are trained to react? And some of Fran's team does do that. But, yeah, let us explore that. That's interesting concept to think of it as a flight team.
Yeah. So and you mentioned also having equity goals, that the district have equity goals or set equity goals. Were there any, like, suggestion of, like, or maybe no, think about it now, but we'd be able to email and say, like?
I can think of one.
Yeah.
To have the discipline rates proportionally match the resistance. Yeah, that's a good goal. We don't want to see the Black kids getting disciplined at twice the rate the white kids are.
And what's tricky about that is when you look at the data, you know, in some schools, it may look like, oh, okay, only 5% of the discipline action is happening to Black kids. But then if they only represent 1% of the school, that's five times as much, you know? Thinking, and then if it's repeatedly the same child, what does that play? Something that we need to look at. I know that looking at the data, sometimes it will look like it's students of color, specifically Black kids, and students with disabilities are the students that you tend to see on those spaces. So how can we address those things with training is the key.
I know you mentioned, like, training staff to be more culturally competent or also understand how to interrupt racism. And that's like a huge component of this because there's probably the only adult or authority figure in the room that is happening. But Olson also mentioned, like, there's so much burnout right now and trying to figure out a way. That's kind of what I, I'd like more of, like, how do we solve that problem? Like, we know we need this training, but we know teachers are burned out. And how do we make it so that it's not like, oh, one more thing to have to do? But something that is super important that we hope that they.
Well, I think you guys, like, was it last year you guys implemented Castle, right? For social-emotional, well, I'm not going to say what I normally say about social-emotional learning, awesome, except for when it's missing cultural responsiveness. Which means when we implement Castle, culturally responsive teachers should have, and practices should have been emphasized approach also. And, you know, when we think about the, just the teacher workforce, we know that is predominantly white and predominantly women because it's education. So then it's a matter of how can we, in those spaces, lean into the community or the work that we want to do? That means having training in which we talk about bias, training where that's addressed. Because it's not just a matter of saying, well, everyone's biased. No, we all have something. Like even as a Black male ed chair, I know I've had to work on, you know, in spaces knowing as a male and where my triggers are. So if we address what those things are and then lean into the learning and being authentic in that space, I believe we can really turn the corner in what a lot of our ed cares can do for not just Black kids, but for any kids that then would be in that. In that space. Is a curb cut.
And to go off of what Olson said, it's also about the quality of the training, right? Like, looking at some slides and just kind of passively like, okay, I took that equity training. Versus, you know, someone actually there interacting with you, getting you scenarios, making you think and challenging. So.
Yeah, I just want to add too, again, you know, being that I am a district employee as well, I know I've been a part of these equity conversations where we talk about bias. And and not just with the SRO team, but with, uh, you know, our climate culture voice and our equity leaders down at our school. Kind of what I'm here for too, and I think where the discussion we go is how do we package it together? How do we present it? Um, because I mean, Brian, you may know more than me, but I've been part of these conversations where we are talking, wh- while it may. While it may not be packaged with social and emotional learning, you know, it's 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 tied to restorative practices or some of these other um. Um, programs uh or initiatives that are in place. So maybe it's how to. Find. Time for our teachers to engage in these trainings and and do we package it along with. SEL restorative practices or what the best best method for that is.
Yeah.
Because I think just adding an additional PD to a teacher's plate is probably asking blocks, or maybe it is tying it into something else.
Well, and I also don't want it to feel like it's a separate thing because it's really.
Right.
Everything.
Exactly.
So then, like, to to make it separate, it also puts it in this like. You know, this category, but.
Yeah.
Where it touches, it's actually.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I have a different question.
All right.
My other question was just around like with the retainment. I think you asked for like data, and I think we have. Data around retainment, but I also was wondering, that's one of the challenges that we always hear is like, there's only. A certain number in every district they're trying to get educators of color, staff of color to join their district, so. What could set us apart, right? What are the things that could set our district apart? Yeah.
Yeah, I I think this really explains the same ways well to what's gonna be presented next. We're talking about for our own pathways and the things that we're doing and celebrating those pieces. And I think we really want to target. Not only thinking about bilingualism, but also like. How do our students' biling team mirrors about themselves? And I think when we have an opportunity, when someone comes to you and says, hey. You know, you should consider education and having an opportunity to experience that pathway. And be supported in that process. I think that's one measure that we can, you know, start to see. Investment of students wanting to participate or staff who want to participate and grow. You know, they may start as a classified staff member, or they move into education. And we have over a hundred. Of our educators right now that are on a conditional license, an emergency license, a restricted license. And we're thinking about how we can help, you know, support them with membership as well. So. I think this spreads really nicely to our next presentation. So.
Yeah, and I think also like even just, we mentioned like um. That skill set and like the recruitment, but we always say like bilingualism is a skill set, but also. Being culturally competent, being biocultural, I think seeing that asset asset.
Yeah, and and using questions in the hiring process to address bias, to to address. Um, opportunities to see how people respond to culturally responsive practices and equitable outcomes. So that's a part of our hard work process as well.
I was, I was going to say, you know, one of the things that we've all been working on and friends taking the lead on it, it's just that whole idea of integrating the equity work into all of our professional development. So it isn't just a standalone activity that. Um, people improve therefore, uh, so that is something that we're doing and also finding a balance on that. I mean. Carving out the time to make sure that when there is something specific that needs to be addressed, that we do that and we can be responsive to that. Fran has been a great advocate for that, for not only the integration, but for. Um, making sure that we have specific training as issues that come out throughout here. The other thing I want to say is your, there's continued suggestions that you put here. I appreciate the way that um. Well, first of all, you acknowledge that we've been working on this because we are trying to work on this. Um, and just pointing out, and I think it's something we're all aware of, we have a long ways to go. There's just, there's just no doubt about it. But um, these are areas that we continue to focus on and will continue to make progress. So I I guess it's a long way of saying I appreciate your partnership and thanks for. Pointing out those areas that we need to continue to struggle forward in and to make some change. So I appreciate it and thank you.
Yeah, thank y'all for coming and really like to your point there, like it is. A little hard warming for me to see like priorities are kind of aligned, like the things that we. Uh, are working towards are similar to what you think we should be working towards. So, uh, I again, I appreciate. I'm glad we have appreciation or our thing else we can for for actually keep us on track. Other questions?
So I'd like to end with one last ask and my group is all like Olson. And I also, I just think it's awesome that we have the the different packs, but. One of the things I've learned most recently is there's a pack that I think should have been on the radar and been working on. Um, that's packed of students with disabilities and because I feel like. In a, in a space where in this country, one in five identify with disability. Within our schools, we have, you know, we know that students on IPs, you know, exist in spaces and also. Because of their disabilities have been labeled with behavior and other things. Graduation rates is directly affected. In fact, students on IP's are identified with disabilities have the lowest graduation rate. I feel like that's an area that we need to lean into and those parents may not have. The same advocacy that like we are so proud and happy to be able to advocate for our black students. I feel like that's a fact that should be looked at.
Thanks. Yes, welcome to stay abreast of course, Andrew.
So. Just before you leave, I do want to address it. You know, we we do have um. Parents that meet with our executive director of special education and our. And I mean, just the directors that happens on a regular basis. I don't know if that's monthly or.
Yeah, we we do have a students that um disability parent pack that Elaine Fox run. Um, I think maybe what I'm hearing is we need to be out new avenues to advertise that a little more widely. Uh, which probably knows that sheer communication component, so that they do meet, um. I believe it is monthly, if that is they positioned, if not, um, at least quarterly, I know that she would be before, so they're able to. And um, help them find different access to resources. Like that, but I will, we will have a message that how do we push that out to make sure everybody's. Because that indicates that it's an order.
And it, and it reminds me of a good point that is, um, that is not a group though that has a regular audience with the board. At this point, so yeah, there's work to do there, but but there is advocacy going on and support being offered, but. Yeah, sounds like we need to improve the communication and.
They just got to check that with somebody that they meet on like.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, all right, that's I know. Hey guys, we all come to, can we take turns at the table?
Go ahead.
Broke this down low.
I didn't keep this on. So, uh, we're excited tonight. We wanted to bring some celebration into the space. And just really recognize the work that is collaboratively happening and collectively happening in our department. We with OSP, with human resources, um, also with our departments. Um, because we're not only going to talk about educator pathways, we're also going to talk about. Grow our own or our classified pathways as well. And so I just wanted to take time to just really thank Kim, Brooke. And Arsona for the work that they've been doing separately. But there's all this work that's happening magically that is really making a difference for our students and our staff. And so I just, I'm really honored to be at this space with them and I just think that for a whole. Sorry, I'm a little emotional here. So, um, I just want to um. Move us on to our next slide, which is all about celebrating your data and pathways for our students and staff. And when I think about these grow our own programs. You know, these are work-based learning opportunities so that we can celebrate from an asset-minded approach to support students and staff. In their journey. And so as we think about students and we think about, you know, they have career pathways, they have our diverse educator pathways, also pathways to support. Uh, as classified staff members, we have classified staff who can also grow into educator pathways. And um pathways to grow within our district. And so one of the things I've been also thinking about, and surprise, I didn't tell you about this, but I've been thinking about. How we can grow our own folks and you know, like, let's say you want to become an office manager as an example. And right now you're serving as a recess, you're serving on recess duty, but you want to grow into that pathway. So we need to think about ways that we can help retain our folks so that they want to stay in our district. And they can see themselves in other um opportunities. And then like Rose, she was an office manager and.
Actually, I started at recess.
And then, you know, now she's serving in this role. And so I think about, we have a lot of folks that are. That live within our community, eighty, about eighty-four percent of our classified staff live here. And they are invested in in starting out, you know, maybe like in a school, and then they see themselves in another role. And so it's our responsibility to hear that and find ways so that we can really make those pathways. And that's what I love about this group right here, because we are very innovative thinkers and it's so awesome to celebrate that. So, moving along here. This is data that you've seen before in terms of our state population. And we know Oregon as a whole is white predominantly. But as we go down below, you can see from the state educator equity report. Uh, in the white section across what the makeup of our educators are. Uh, and then students, and then looking at the blue data is the HSD data. So I want to say that, you know, we have been very targeted in our approach to try to grow our own. And to try to create space for our students to see themselves. Uh, in the staff that are supporting them. Do we have work to go? Yes, we do. And we are here to celebrate the work that, you know, that we've done collectively to make sure that we are putting targeted efforts. And supports and resources to continue to make that focus on diversifying our staff. So that they reflect our students by investing in these grow our own programs. And I think that's um something that we. I'm excited to see what we're, we have started to do in this journey, but I'm more excited to see what's going to be happening in the future. Because people that are invested in this work are not going to stop and we're going to be transformative. And we're going to be the place that districts are going to be looking for to try to model what we're doing. Whether it's a student, a staff, or a person who wants to become a leader uh in our district as well. Oh, that's a good.
It's fun. Um, so just thinking about a lot of our grow your own efforts that we've um started so far. So in the top left and then the bottom right are two partnerships. Through grow your own efforts that have been funded through the state. Um, one is with OSU and their master's um program. So any classified staff that has their bachelor's. Um, you know, that they've been recruited and has shown an interest in becoming a teacher. We have a very strong partnership with them. And the bottom right is Teacher Connect, and that's another grow your own grant. Um, where that is. Where wherever you are, we will meet you at your educational journey. So if you, whatever degree you have. A high school diploma, you have some college credits. That um Teacher Connect is really geared. To kind of meet you where you are and support you on your journey to become a teacher. The bottom left is just the number of classified staff that we've connected with over the past couple of years. Some aren't ready to start yet. They're just needing more information, but you know, sometimes it takes. Multiple times meeting with folks until they finally find the right program and in the right space to to start a program. Um, it's. That's kind of where we are and exciting news that we are um the next grant cycle. Um, we've now applied for four grow your own grants. We have two that were, these two that were renewing and then two more. So hopefully that expands some of the work that we're doing. And then the top right is our diverse educator pathway, which really focuses on our students. And with that, I'm actually going to head it over to Arsona and we can move to the next slide.
Um, here we have a picture, two pictures. One of our first cohort of our all your own bilingual educator program. And on the right is the most recent picture of that. Um, this started about nine years ago and um it originated with Mike Brook and. Uh, partner, uh, co- a collaboration with Western Oregon. And where um we committed to recruiting students who want to become educators who are bilingual. This was because we had a need for a new language. Um, expansion that was happening in our elementaries were growing and we needed a teacher, right? And so we started investing in our own kid and um. And the the partnership with Western is that they would. Uh, provide a community to support them at Western and then we would provide a community here to have that network with them. And have them come back in the summer and do internships with us. And um, and provide them with three thousand dollars worth of internship hours that they could um, you know. Get and at the same time, um, get some experience. So, um, the difference between the two pictures is that in the first one. We have our scholars and the HR department and the teaching and learning department. It can be Mike there, it can be a few people that you probably recognize, right? The second picture, all of them are scholars but me. And so as you can see, uh, the program has grown. Um, we went from having, um. I think our last two years ago, our last cohort was like five kids to having twenty. Uh, the following year. So if you could go to the next. Um, thank you. Um, here are the graduation, the retention rates of our program. Since we're in the ninth year, we had four, of course, that have graduated and fifths, it's graduating mid-year. And um, as you have seen, uh, the retention rate is different, um. The majority of the reasons why the retention rates are lower at at the first few, in the first few years is because. Some of them decided to go into a different career and that, okay, but that as well. We actually have two that we've hired, one in the tech department and one here in OSP. That are working here with us and we're still supporting them with their career. Uh, but we so far have hired thirteen educators, five in elementary. Four middle and four high school. And um, and we continue to support their um careers as they become teachers as well. That partnership with them doesn't end there. We still uh, we connect with them, support them. And um, help them to also think about their next steps within their teaching career. Do they want to become a superintendent? Do we want to become an superintendent? Uh, that, those, that's our goal. Another thing that I wanted to add is that. The the really neat thing about this program and that sets aside from other districts is that we've made it. Um, a family baby. Um, every one of those students. Gets to speak with Mike every year in a small group setting. They get to speak with Connor, Brian, like all of us. And they get to give us feedback, uh, they get to ask us questions. So by the time they graduate, they they do that four times before they graduate. So by the time they graduate, they know us well. And so they feel more at home and that that's helping the retention aspect because they're, they know that they're not alone. They can reach out and ask for help. All that, you know, crying because they're, they're struggling, you know, as new year teachers. The first, the first cohort also was um. A cohort that we hired in the two thousand, in the, during the pandemic. And that was another, um, it was a huge asset for us to have them join us during the pandemic because um. They were able to to do well, well in that, um, we're not. Um, and and again, having those connections really helped. Um, because we were able to support them as needed. They actually taught summer school that they've been virtually died with. As well before we got, um, we hired them. Next, please.
Rose on that last slide. Are there any favorite representatives or? Just to.
Yeah. We couldn't do this without our connectors. So before two thousand. We couldn't do this without our connectors. So before two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we didn't have connectors. And as you saw on numbers, there were five, three and at most, right? Um it was really hard to recruit because we al- also do other jobs. And so we couldn't be at the high school recruiting and talking to students. Um but last year with the, we were able to hire Brendan in that role and Brendan is just like a kid magnet. They love him so much and they, they um, you know, as, as he walked in the door, they're a little bit frightened, get right and. They asked some questions. So even though we recruit twenty students last year. Then we had another grad come in and uh we hired Linda Chavez. And now between the two of them, they've been able to recruit thirty-six students. And um they just did here. They're both K I graduates, so they're our own students. And so they also um are connected that way with uh with the student. They know with the student that I've been through. And um I remember, actually, no, let's go to the next slide and then I'll tell the story. So um the summer school intern uh program is something that we're really, really proud. Um the students come and they um work in partnership with classroom teachers. So they're their mentors and they. Plan lessons, they, they are given feedback, they, they um, they get professional development. And uh they'll also create less, lesson based on um college and career readiness in uh the club setting. And so they, they provide cooking lessons, robotics, um and other uh clubs that they um, they want, they, they're. We try to ask them what, what are the things that they are good at and they like. And so um they um, uh we allow them to be able to uh provide a club also that also has, you know, their strengths involved in it. Um we uh also pay them uh twenty dollars if they're bilingual, eighteen in the net. And um they're uh also have the most, the more experienced men um scholars mentor the new ones. And so they support each other that way. So two things to celebrate. One is that two years ago, Secretary Perdona. Came to our B E P program to visit this program. He wanted to see, had heard about the grow your own program and he wanted to come and see what that was all about. And then he came to talk to our scholars. And trying to do it, I missed it on the vacation. He didn't check my calendar. And so um. That was such a, such a neat, um it, it was just a neat, neat experience to have that acknowledgement from him. And then um in the last two, the last year, I had, I was invited to uh speak about the program at, at the national level. And then we've been presenting at different conferences, national and statewide. And I've been um also um with our um admin of color. We, we advocated at the state level for funding uh for, for these programs. And um we were fortunate enough to get a two hundred fifty thousand dollar uh grant this year, which, which. Uh means that I'm not going to lose Brenda for the state and we're able to hire another um. Uh connector in partnership with Brooke so that they can support C T B and grow your own uh together. So um. Yeah, if you could go to the next, there's a video there if you want to watch it later. It's just a, a student talking about his um, his club experience. Some of the opportunities for growth that we, we've been working on is um. Recruiting um educators that are beyond the classroom setting. So uh we're re, Brandon and Brenda recruiting educators who want to be music teachers, who want to be special education teachers. Who want to be um in any specialist area, also counselors. And um we are also, uh we started last year recruiting other students of color. So we have students that multilingual students or bicultural students that are represented and um showing interest in education. We're adding them in, adding them in. But in the first cohort, we, we had a few and they were a little confused because I didn't say Spanish. I don't know. People were like, oh, you're, you're good. You can come and teach in summer school. Uh we need you. And so we started doing that. Uh we're also not only uh recruiting students who are going to Western, but we are now taking students who are going to any college. Um although they're, you know, underway to becoming an educator. Uh this year, that's year, we s- uh started providing a two hundred level uh college class, education class. And we've had um students that have taken advantage of that. So whether they graduate or may have credits, education credits under their belt. Um we provide classroom management, uh professional development. And also professional skills training, which is so important for high school seniors who are becoming adults. Um to be able to, to grow in those skills. Um and I think that was it.
Okay, um I just wanted to say, I forgot to mention, we talked about recruiting earlier, but I just want to mention about the retention piece. Because that's important as well, and I forgot to mention that earlier. Um you know, with a lot of these grants and just with a lot of the support, there's a lot of mentoring and mentorship that happens. Um because that is important as staff are working full-time, going to school, taking care of their families. So that mentorship piece is so crucial in that retention. And we're also, you know, we have affinity groups here as well for our classified. And licensed staff, which has been um very valuable uh for that retention piece. Um and so moving on to our stationary engineer and limited makesense engineer apprenticeship. So this is something new um that we've partnered with um facilities, again, trying to just provide. Uh opportunities for our staff. So we've partnered with P C C and their apprenticeship pathway. Um and um it's for our brand, for our seniors and also our classified staff. Um and it's been very exciting uh the past few months putting this together. Um and there's a lot of interest in our in, in our info session. We've had about forty um staff and students. That came and just wanted to learn more because they're interested in this pathway. Um we have about ten folks that we are going to be um doing our initial interview. And then next week we'll have our, our formal interview, interview to kind of see where our finalists are. Um but just very excited for this, a new opportunity for our students and staff to grow here. First, I wanted to say, I think um at the heart of what you've already heard is that we are about removing barriers. And helping our staff and students achieve their dreams. And that is this group, is this group doing that. So as we think about celebrating our grow your own work. Which has become a signature program within our, within our school district, it's also about um celebrating the work-based learning. That connects us all. And I love the transferable skills of, of what Connor was talking about. Because that really also highlights our overall internship work. And helping students to recognize their talents and gifts and assets in new and different ways and connecting them to work-based learning. And what that could look like in their future. So here's just a few of our opportunities that we've had that could fund speak to Alaska Airlines. One, we're one of two school districts that Alaska Airlines partners with for uh high school students every summer. We also support, support small business owners as they were coming back from COVID. That was a great partnership to say, hey, we have talented students. That can help to support you as you recover. You'll also see um students supporting not only from a high school, but to a middle school lens. Uh here's what I'm learning in health sciences. And this is, here's what the pathway could look like for you. Because we know that that period of your support is, is definitely a, a strength that um our students bring to one another in those discussions. Shout out to business office. They have an intern currently, but that's a great example of transferable skills. And for also for people to recognize, hey, you may see every day the talents and skills of our teachers. Right in front of you students, but there are so many great avenues and opportunities within our education system. So I think the more that we can also showcase that within our school district, the better off we are. Um of diversifying and growing our students into various pathways and opportunities to be voices within our community. The last one is Falcon Farm. Maybe you were gifted or saw a um, a, a box this fall. With some produce in it and that comes all from Falcon Farm. In the summer, they work so hard and they harvest all of their crops. And so we developed this summer internship program for those community um farm boxes that come throughout the fall.
The people on the last picture are really small, but that is a better enterprise as well.
Yeah. Um so we also think about, we are of course in tune and looking at our educational workforce. But we also know that what we have learned over the past ten plus years in workforce within our grow your own can also be replicated within workforce in our community. And we have the students in our, in our schools that are uh bicultural, bilingual. That can provide such great work to our companies and strengthen our community. So when we look at advanced manufacturing, we are the largest advanced manufacturing town in all of Oregon. When we look at healthcare and we know that there is such a need for healthcare and the diversification there, and then also in technology. Those have been um key focus areas as we grow our current technical education programs, as we grow work-based learning opportunities. Um the summer, we're, we're doing some additional summer camps. Students are going to Pacific University for healthcare. There's a healthcare uh S T T camp that's happening at Glencoe High School. We have our fabulous C State Play Day Camp that is happening once again at Hillsborough High School. So it's also about those partnerships and experiences that students have on campus and how those transcend out into our community. And we have celebrated, we've discussed this before in apprenticeship, but I just want to share, we are in the middle of cohort two. And we are extending to biotech. What's great about biotech is also the um clean rooms. That also advanced manufacturing provides. And so we're holding that in as our next CCP program. We're building in another community or another uh partner, Cascade Systems Tech. As we just continue to grow and learn from the work that we're doing and how do we get better at it. And then finally, I think we just need to close on celebrating, celebrating the support we have for our students. Celebrating the support for our staff, celebrating departmentally how we work alongside each other to make things happen. And the community support that we have. We continuously hear that. Uh we just had our CCP Springs Steering Committee. It's always something that is also set Hillsborough apart is the community partnerships and the support that we have. So I think across the board celebration, I included this picture because I think this is also just full circle of high school students helping. At Lab Acres and their um Astro apprenticeship Program. So we have a high school student working with elementary students of filling out job applications and applying for apprenticeship. So I just love this uh thought as well of how do we continue to help support students in a pre-K twelve-plus system. In these achieving their dreams and opportunities and growth as we move forward. Any questions? We are here to.
Well, I did have just one question. There was a slide that had the cohort twenty nineteen, twenty-three, but it said T V D on retention. And part participants.
The freshman side, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, it's almost there.
There we go.
This one.
Yes, because um they are graduating this year. And so we're still waiting to see how many of them are there. I think we need to hire a few of them.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to update that data. And it just, we're just waiting to finish the year to be able to do that and see how many are going to start.
I, I love the idea of us trying to creating opportunities for advancement within our organization. I uh.
Yeah.
Spending my whole career in the private sector, that was always incredibly important in private. Like, if you couldn't find a path for you in that organization, you had to go somewhere else.
Yeah.
So um that feels like such important work. I'm glad that we're focusing on it.
And Ken has done a really good job of working at data on like who's leading, when people are leading, and it's usually in the first three years. And so we've got to find a way to have those folks feel like they can see themselves uh stepping into positions. Uh so that we don't have that turnover, because we have them, then they come back to us as well. And I was just thinking about like the relationships that we have uh over the, the many years that have built this. And I'm just really excited about like where we're going to continue to go. And it's all, it's all about those relationships. Relationships build that retention, because people know who to go to, who to talk to and who to make connection with. And when we build connected in a organization, then you're more apt to want to stay in the organization.
I, another question that I just had was around uh the connectors. How, and how they want to recruit students? What does that look like for classified staff? Get them engaged, that to get them to know the gate, who could do this?
I think, you know, part of it is we've done uh a job there recently and we want to kind of rebrand what that might look like. We have done surveys in the past to find out who might be interested in different things. And so I think, you know, with the H VAC and L M E um that we found out that were forty that were interested. So we're kind of thinking about how can we rebrand that? And we're often, you know, having the day stay survey. That helps us to kind of see like what people are interested in. And I just went to a conference uh with Work Human and they were talking about the time period that people want to have turnover rates. And in terms of their growth is much shorter than what we've experienced in our journeys. And so how do we meet that metric so that we're ensuring that they have space to grow? And I think it's also looking at, like, even within our department, we have admin support. But we have added in our tech integration so that we can work with our business office and tech services to make sure that we're supporting and creating space. How do you look at what you currently have and how do you add space for them to grow into? And not just say you're only in this role and this is what you only can be, but what can you become and what can you grow into?
Our administrators and our um teacher leaders have also done a really good job supporting our classified staff. And looking at, you know, helping them go into the next step. I, I can call some physical, I have some classified stuff then. Needs to become a teacher because someone comes after them. And they're, they're somebody that will come to them.
Kim's off in spare time in her office. She'll, I'll be like, oh, where are you? She's like, oh, I'm meeting with someone, you know, by thirty, they have some questions about. Our program or what they can grow into. So it's that relationship.
Wait, off the cuff, off the cuff, use the example recess, the office, the admin center. I just think there's a video.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty clear, the reason why you guys were traveling all over the country and telling everybody how awesome we're doing, because this is awesome. It's a, it's a marathon. It is not a sprint. We have to manage our expectations, but this is more than just putting a dent in. This is charting back for us to make a difference in the future. So, thank you, thank you.
Great comment. I have agreements. We, we share our B stuff. We keep our A plus stuff just for us.
I don't want to problem that at all.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, we say. Although I think Brooke is up again in that.
You know it. Just transitioning to my next slide back. Hi, everybody. Next presentation, our yearly drug, alcohol, and tobacco plan review. And so you have had time um to review the plan. It is on its first read. So we know that it'll give, give you some time additionally to review that, look at our data in our slides. Tonight, we really wanted to bring um a voice to the work. And to talk a little bit about not only the prevention, but the intervention supports in place. And I am honored to be with such a talented panel that not only come from the education role. But also um in community work-based um experiences too that they're going to highlight, they introduce themselves. We also have some preliminary data for the Oregon Student Health Survey, so it hasn't come out yet. But we wanted to show you some of the initial data that also may help to um showcase some of the work that we're doing. To support the student responses and then also to celebrate the community partnerships and connections that we have to support our students along the way. So our approach is a very collaborative approach, especially shout out to Jenny. She needs with our community. So our approach is a very collaborative approach, especially shout out to Jenny. She needs with our community partners. I mean, really hears that feedback of use contact, life stance, life works to say, hey, how is this working for you? Here's what's happening for us. How can we move forward together? It's also hearing from our uh school counselors, our administrators, our families and our students on how do we continue to get better in our work of the prevention side, but also that intervention side too? And supporting families in that um not only the prevention, but also that intervention work too. So that's a link that goes to our plan, the nine gauge plan. Um hopefully you have any questions next time that that I come, feel free to also email those, ask me, and we'll address those along the way. We think about the continuing of support, and I think on this one, something to celebrate and also that we acknowledge that there's continual uh effort to strengthen this continued support is strengthening the prevention all the way to the treatment side. So you'll see that under each category, the investments that we've made in those areas. So on the prevention side, our our K twelve FBL framework and delivering lessons in middle school advisory, our health education, our family nights, the team's going to highlight some of that later on, the staff education professional development that we continue to provide and and try to even get better out as we uh as we grow. And then also that early intervention. So that's a lot of the work of our school counselors, our students' permanent counselors, um coming alongside students and families and then deciding what the best next step is going to be for that student. So sometimes it is a referral to our student-based health center. Sometimes it's a referral to one of our community um health support. Sometimes that is um looking at a referral maybe for an outside service, maybe a a treatment program. So that center area is that really that bridge connector liaison in between our universal work that we're doing to then and maybe a potential intensive treatment um towards that right hand side. Tonight on the team, you can see an asterisk next to the name. They're going to be speaking, introducing themselves. So I just want to highlight though, thank you for the investments that we have made in this work. It takes um a a team of field experts in our buildings and coming alongside of us in our community partnerships to make this happen. And so with that, Justine can we provide a little a little glimpse of some of the early response data that will help us to unfold some of the support that the team has been providing this year?
Perfect. Justine Green, I'm the OSP data tech. So this is preliminary data, which is why you won't see state data next to it. We just have preliminary numbers for our district currently. Um our lovely team member Aaron Hansen is very much bugging them about when we will get our data. Um as soon as we do get that, it will also be packaged out and sent out to our building counselors who will utilize it as well. Uh currently, our response rate overall as a district is about a sixty seven point four percent response rate, which is up from the last time we did this, which was two years ago. Uh this survey is administered fall of even years. So this was the second year we had done the Oregon Student Health Survey. The next one will be administered is fall of twenty twenty four. So the sixth grade response rate was about eighty percent. What gets a little difficult with this is that the percentage um is based on the responses for that question. Students can opt out of answering any question they would like at any time. So while that looks like a steep increase on that alcohol use for uh sixth graders, that two percent is a whopping twenty-two students. So it's not as drastic as it looks on that. And then for our eighth graders, we had approximately a seventy-five percent response rate. The which the last one, the twenty twenty survey, had a really low response rate, which is why you were going to see the percentages go up slightly for this most recent one as well. And then the eleventh graders had a forty-seven point seven percent response rate, which if I'm remembering correctly, the last one was about twenty-five to thirty percent response rate for the twenty twenty um survey.
Okay, um I'm Heather Dix. I'm the secondary school support system counselor on special assignment. Um I support systems. Uh and part of it is looking at the data, and I'll talk about the numbers, but another part of the system, I've worked really hard this year in collaboration with Justine and then the synergy team, kind of your bridge between the synergy team and synergy language and the building administrators to clean up um top. So we have clean data and that the discipline recording is accurate. So finding ways to help system with that and bring all of the documents together, hoping to be a festival for our building admin and the support, the the discipline and including the data. So for high school, um drug and alcohol-related discipline makes up ten point six percent of all discipline referrals. Uh there's a lot of different chunks, so to make it a little bit more digestible, uh alcohol for high school alcohol-related discipline referrals makes five percent. Uh nicotine and tobacco is thirty-nine point two percent, and marijuana or other drugs fifty-five point eight percent. For our middle schools, drug and alcohol-related discipline referrals makes up three point three percent of the whole discipline referrals. Uh again, for alcohol, uh makes up eleven point one percent. Nicotine and tobacco, eleven point one percent, and marijuana or other drugs, the seventy-seven point eight percent of that three point two percent. Uh so this past year, we've continued to build um our efforts to support buildings, which actually all go back to older. So the data I just talked about also is reflective in the referrals to our drug and alcohol support counselors. So it almost um matches up exactly as far as what the influencers are. But they'll talk more about that. Uh so this past year, we continue to build our efforts to support buildings uh with the implementation of the HSC Drug and Alcohol Discipline Plan, but also to bring in the force for families, buildings that and families for students outside of the discipline for preventative support.
Hi, so my name is Marissa Cranza. I'm a bilingual drug and alcohol counselor. So as Heather mentioned, we have a substance use referral form that school teams can access as students consult prefer as well as the the school parent teams. And part of what we offer is um partnered with school teams to consult and collaborate in terms of student's substance use, provide screening and brief intervention, um and approach to treatment, design and deliver training um and professional development opportunities for staff related substance use. We facilitate prevention efforts, including school events, um parent outreach and advisory that supports students. We also created a bookmark that has a QR code where students can directly scan it and they will take it to the referral form. And this was distributed to um all of our buildings in efforts um for the prevention and intervention efforts to um really help students understand that they don't need to be in trouble to be able to access this. A little self-disclosure, I started my career as general justice. I actually moved to the district as of November. Um within our local county, I worked there as a probation officer. So when I was there, a lot of my work with my clients, our students of Hope for a Full District, that when I saw that they were already in trouble legally. So being in this will now grant you the opportunity to really work on the prevention and intervention because they're still the same students I was working with before, um but at a higher, at a lower level now. And so having access to them and and helping them understand that they can access us and services without either getting to juvenile justice or um or getting in trouble or expelled again in the discipline that we offer here at Hope for a Full District.
So we do have, um we've been uh had the opportunity to have some presentations um within our um community. Also, in quarter four, we'll be offering other opportunities for families to learn about resources and get information. Next slide please. And uh Junia and I created um or updated a flyer that's also on the Hope for a Full District website in English and Spanish. That has a lot of the um resources that we help refer them to as well as our contact information.
My name is Junia Haley. I am a substance use counselor with HIC. So this is our first year collecting data related to substance use counseling referrals. Um so far, as of today, we've received sixty referrals. Um the first graph, the blue graph on the top left, breaks down counseling referrals by race and gender. As you can see, our Hispanic students are receiving the most referrals and therefore the most supports. The bar graph on the top right depicts referrals by grade level, with eighth grade being our most commonly referred student. And the line graph on the bottom illustrates a timeline of referral frequency over the course of the school year. Next slide. So this next set of data talks about substance use referrals, but not to be confused with discipline referrals. So what we're talking about now is counseling referrals to Marissa and myself. Um and this set of data shows the primary reason for substance use counseling referrals at the high school level. Um and as you see there, marijuana and nicotine are the larger chunks which match the data that Heather talked about earlier today. Um next slide. And as well in middle school, marijuana being the primary reason that we see students and get referred students um is, yeah, marijuana is that that big gray chunk.
I'm Jenny Carey. I'm the mental health specialist, social worker on special assignment this year. And I have the honor to support our students for and wellness counselors at our secondary level. So this is a breakdown of some of the supports that they're offering students. Um we have a total of nine hundred and three unique students served um with this program. That isn't to say that's as many sessions as happened with support and wellness counselors. Um because a lot of the students come back again and again for that additional support. And this is really what we're talked about with the prevention and intervention is that embedded support in schools, um a face that they know that they can connect with when they're starting to experience some difficulty or some distress. Um so they support with mental health, they support with social and emotional, um some academic crossover with the school counseling, but they also do small groups. They support the substance use collaboration with the with the team here. Um they take on some of those teen intervening referrals when they layered up um it with with lots of people being referred all at once. So um this is a group of folks that often um are representative of the community and that several of them are bilingual, bi-cultural. Um that's that's reflective in the data there that students who um have representation in their counseling departments are are often showing up for that support in the counseling departments with these folks. Um so you can go to the next slide. Quick numbers. This is our wellness indicator report. And so um I know Justine spoke about the data increasing a little bit with some some of the uh or uh student health survey data. This is going to reflect the increases in the support offered as a result of that. Uh this kind of spans that continuum of support, suicide screenings, care coordinator referrals. Um some of them are kind of evento support that we offer students as well as some of our district partnerships, um community partnerships for school-based mental health. And next one. And these are amazing partners that we collaborate with. As Brooke said, you know, the the real like part of this work is the partnership we have with our community. We cannot provide treatment services in our district with our with our infrastructure. And so we lean on our community to provide the support necessary to connect students and families to what they need to to improve. And so we have some school-based mental health partnerships. We have uh treatment services and community uh relationships with Washington County Behavioral Health, um Sutcliffe's All Resource Center. We have um awesome opportunities to connect with them in different platforms, um either through our substance use prevention kind of public health team in Washington County or the behavioral health team. I get to speak with our community partners, providing school-based services really regularly to refine the services that we have in place and make sure that we're reducing any barriers to students accessing those supports. Um one of the one of the things that we noticed early on was we had a lot of students referred for services or interested in services that were never getting connected. And so part of this programming is to really reduce that, figure out what's getting in the way, providing the teams uh at the schools the support that they need to get those families connected to the supports that are there for them.
We want to leave those few minutes for any questions that you may have. Thank you, and the team, and also for all of your support. Uh this work has been an honor to support the resources. We just hope that we can continue to grow and expand. We know that there is a need for both that prevention and intervention uh side of the work. So that is what we continue to focus on, and we'd love to hear any questions or comments.
Is there any interaction and or referral that comes through our uh our student clinic?
School health is, yeah, the school-based health center?
Yes.
Yeah, we we this team.
We send we send students over there quite often to the C A D C that works there, the two. The two, yeah.
Nice. Yeah, they can provide evaluation and and kind of bridge support for any student that that go in for that need.
My only other question was, why are we just now keeping the data? You said you just started tracking the data this year.
Well, the referral form is is new.
Oh, so we're just now tracking referrals?
Yeah, correct.
But we know how many children we serve and what we serve.
Two year.
No, two years.
Referrals to me, to me and Marissa, so counseling referrals. So this position is is new to our district and that's through investment that we've made. So what you'll see on the wellness indicator report is as we've invested, we want to make sure that we hold ourselves accountable to to the work and to show growth and improvement. So these two, honest to goodness, like such an asset to our to our work, but they are new. Um I it probably took around a hundred years without calling you to like come and work. But that's why we started tracking the data is because we have the awesome people to be able to see where this goes. Great.
Eight years to recruit. What kind of jobs?
Well, I I knew actually Brooke was my cousin career in Glencoe, and I really wanted to be a probation officer. So I did that for many years. And then I, like I said, I we were just locking kids up all the time and I had probation and the court and all that. And so as my life evolved, um I kept reaching out, like, is there something that I could still help the same students but in a different capacity where I'm not arresting them or taking them to court at that level? Um so it finally worked out.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Our next uh agenda item presentation is our annual safety report. I just want to also, for those of you who might not have remembered or realized, I keep one of Casey's laughing horse to us and want to congratulate him on his new position in the Hooverland School.
Wait, that was that was that was another.
It was past April.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate it. That's um so the presentation, the the information is in your board packet. It's too dense to put into a hidden slideshow um because of the data involved. So a couple of things that I want to uh start with, obviously, um the systems that we have in place in our school district is a passion of mine and we built it from the ground up. I want you to know and our community to know that we know for a fact that this comprehensive system that we built up in safety for our district is better than any in our state, in our region. It's a fact. Uh we're looked at for that and we should be very proud of that. Now, having said that, you never fully arrive in saying you're safe. There is always something. The the systems that we have in place are people-dependent, and we have a lot of people in our district. So those systems rely on our building staff, our students and our community to make sure that they are implemented. The other thing is that, you know, like I said, nothing's a hundred percent. We do look at things nationally and we deep思考, what if this incident happened at one of our schools? How would how would we uh provide a safe environment for our staff and students if this incident in another state were to be in Hillsborough? And from that, we make decisions on if we need to change it. And from that, we make decisions on if we need to change it. Fortunately, a lot of the systems that we have in place and a lot of the things that we have added to our buildings. Uh, to kind of uh prevent access. Uh, prevents a lot of those things again, but we rely on people. And so that's why we are uh so adamant about all of the things that we require our buildings to do. We say this all the time, you know, these systems are are not convenient until. Uh, we need to use them. And when I say systems of safety, it's everything from our drug and alcohol counseling program, our care teams, our flight teams, all of our threat assessment team, all of these things are made up. Uh, for our systems and safety. So I just wanted to make sure that you get an understanding of that because there's a lot of uh words on this report and a lot of things that we do. But I want to assure you that uh it's all there for a reason and we should be proud of the systems that we have in place. Uh, in the report is I wanted to highlight uh a lot of things we do, but you know, one highlighting our public safety office. So our public safety office uh really is um combined uh our night patrol monitors, our police chief. Our uh security system specialists and our emergency preparedness uh arm of that. And so there's some data in here um that you can look at and and this is for this school year. But just, you know, in our like our night patrols on evenings and weekends, we have had almost five thousand patrols of our of our buildings. And that also includes uh when something's happened in a neighborhood, working with our police department and those types of things to help. Um, solve things, missing people, uh, you know, looking for people in neighborhoods, et cetera. So our public safety office, uh, as well as our law enforcement partners is a is a big component of what we do uh to protect ourselves. All of that training through uh state agencies, um, and and certainly with our partnership with the Hillsborough Police, they provide all of our training for our police chief. Uh, so that we don't have to conduct that on our own. Are um going on the next thing, our safety summit, this is unique uh to to Hillsborough. A lot of districts that I talk to want to do this, but it it for whatever reason, it hasn't. But this is a really our go-to that we can spend a quality half day or three quarters of a day with our buildings, uh, with the people that we expect. To understand our our safety systems and so they know what to do uh should something happen. I tell people, it doesn't really matter what I know about our safety systems and and how to react. I'm not in the building, so um it's the people in the building that need to know. The safety summit is that opportunity for them uh to refresh. Uh, also if they're new, to be able to understand um what our our safety system is, especially people who are coming in from other districts. Um, it's a little bit of an aha moment of what we ask them to do as far as completing their site comprehensive site safety plan and all of those things. So uh in the safety uh summit section here, it just has the topics that we uh talked about this past year. We are uh planning for our safety summit right when school gets out uh here this June. Uh, and there will be um certainly a similar topics, but we always uh come up with some new things that are 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 going on trend-wise in our community. Uh, our healthy and safe schools plan, uh, this is something that uh the state of Oregon implemented a handful of years ago. We have taken that and added uh many more components to that, just so we can have house everything in a singular document. Uh, but um not only does it address our environmental safety concerns, but also uh things that we need to do to keep our buildings safe and healthy. So um building safety practices, which um one of the things um for our our this is for our school buildings is our uh our safety drills. Uh, again, uh, not the most convenient thing for our schools to do, but we do take it pretty seriously and we do track. And uh with the help of our uh executive directors to make sure schools are doing what they need to do. Uh, so that we are prepared and the timing is prepared so that we don't have um. Not that any district would do this, but let's not have all of our school safety drills done in May when we've had eight months of school before. So making sure that they're timely, that we hit some things right at the front of the year. Uh, and so that we can continue on that thing because as you guys know, um, we, things happen in our district. Uh, whether it's police activity or tragedy or whatever, and we need to be able to implement some of these things that we've done. Go binders, basically each classroom has a go binder that has all of our basic necessary safety information. So if there's a substitute or we're in the middle of something and there needs to be a refresher on, you know. Um, the highlights of the lockdown drill or lockout drill or a hole or something, those are in our buildings. Uh, strike teams, I can definitely say that the strike teams are unique to Hillsborough. I can also add something that uh we need to. That's an improvement of all of ours, uh, we need to do some work. Uh, so at the safety summit this year, we will be doing spending some more time on our strike team. So that's uh what that means, that's an all hazards kind of approach. So if something happens, whether it's an earthquake or something within the school building. Then the school has the tools and the team necessary to be independent and to manage through anything with little or no help from the outside. Uh, so we definitely are planning to do uh some more detailed work on that uh coming up uh this summer and then moving forward. Uh, with the pandemic, we it was on our list to do earlier, um, I just kind of put a wrench in it for that. Um, and the other things that um we have done this year with the bond is we updated all of our building emergency supplies. So back in two thousand and six, uh, when we were the recipient of the federal REMS grants, which put put a lot of these initial systems in place. We were able to update some of those individual classroom uh kits, building kits. So those are, you know, expiration dates updated and those types of things, so our building housing supplies uh to to maintain. Our threat assessment team, we did a presentation in the fall uh so that you have a better understanding of our threat assessment team. Uh, that continues to be a point of pride for us in our district. Uh, and um we continue to meet monthly on that and as needed. So just again, a shout out to all of our community partners. If we have uh what we consider a level two threat within twenty-four hours, that group is committed to getting together. And being able to assist the school and and assess the situation to make sure that we're doing the best, not only for. That student who is at the, you know, is is in that crisis or making those threats, but to make sure that our staff at that building or buildings um are safe. Um. The next thing too is just our continued uh partnership with our state schools committee in Washington County. That is a kind of interdisciplinary team of Washington County school districts, but also uh which are law enforcement partners, our fire partners. Uh, nine one one is involved in that, the juvenile department is involved in that, where we can uh talk about incidents that happen, uh, how we can partner better. Uh, within the agencies uh to make things better. Um, so I just wanted to give you guys an overview, there's a lot more in this report uh that you can take a look at. I would encourage you, if there's questions to ask now or email me, I can talk about this for a long time. But um I just want to, I wanted to give an update uh that all of these great things we have in place. Um, and so you can know that we're doing everything we can as a district uh to address issues that are happening in our schools or could potentially happen in our schools. Um, are there any questions that I can answer? The safety report, what we do. Something like that.
I think the only question I have is, do we have like MOUs for this we had before?
We do, so so based on this, so for example, like our our threat assessment team, because we have a lot of agencies and we're talking about students, we do have MOUs with. Um, the police department, sheriffs, juvenile, E H S. Um, we also have them with other things within these things, MOUs where they're required. Questions?
Thank you. Our next agenda item is is a discussion of the health and education partnership update.
John Travis, thank you. Okay, that's off of this one. Um, it's well, thanks. The goals for tonight are to give you an update on the partnership structure, which you you probably don't know about, but we're taking steps to advance that partnership. Also talking about resource contributions that are coming to the table from each partner and then arriving back at the conversation about block fifty-six and pursuing the possible acquisition of property on the block fifty-six. You guys know about the special programs we have in health sciences, part of our C T programming and two of our high schools, and we love to create a capsule experience where students would actually go to a health center and. Care for their community in a bilingual and culturally responsible way. And we've documented all this and we're going after grants together. And we have established our values and every time we put down a grant application or we develop, right now we're developing a memory of understanding with these partners so that we can affirm our partnership. We believe in these values. And tonight I want to give you updates specifically about some steps we've taken. It's getting more real all the time. And so May twenty twenty-three, here's what you gotta know and here's what our partners are telling their boards of directors and leaders. Uh, we visited Portland State University member Jason Franklin, who was the project manager for what's known as the Banport Commons, a project at Portland State University, which is a multi-agent reconstruction project that serves a variety of uh community needs in Portland. And we learned from Jason some of the things that were foundational to their success. One of those is creating clear agreements as a partnership. And they hired a lawyer named Nina Alexander, who works with rather white development law firm in Portland to advise them on that process. And now she's coaching us and we've actually contracted with Nina to meet with us as partners. And uh we're drafting an MOU that would solidify the bullets that you see there. What are our shared objectives? What are our leadership structures, including a potential steering committee and a project management uh committee? And then what is the budget process? How do entities like Virginia Garcia, P C C and H S D pull resources to accomplish a project together? And how do we care for each other and be real clear about the details on legally and financially? And then resources being brought to bear on this project currently would be uh P C C passing a bond in November, which earmarked twenty million dollars for expansion of allied health and transfer degree programming. Uh, here on the west side, being in Hillsborough specifically and block fifty-six specifically. Uh, H S D, our uh property there, which is currently known as Miller, just as well as gain share dollars we've met with the city. Uh, Mike and Michelle and I have to affirm the interest of the city in uh adding gain share dollars to this project. It's a mutual interest for the health of the pages of the district in Hillsborough and H S D. And then Virginia Garcia would continue to require grants and new capital campaigns, raise money for a health center, which would kind of be the where the community is served as health workforce uh site. Uh, please keep going, so just to remind you, we've had watercolor artist renderings of this in in our dream, but keep going, more. They keep getting fancier and we can show what's called massing studies of how these just building might take shape given our current footprint. And then back to the conversation with Michelle tonight would be um what would be, our intention would be to continue to pursue pieces of property that would be adjacent to this to make our footprint bigger and the potential of what we could construct. And even the flow of traffic where patients and students might be dropped off to pick up would be uh better if we had a little bigger footprint. As the additional contribution of H S D to this project, take it away, Michelle.
All right, so uh thank you Travis, this image may look familiar to you, the you can barely see it, little delicate orange line around our H S D current property. So that is the Miller East campus. Um, and we've been talking about it, we uh can see adjacent properties, but they're not identified in this picture. Um, but there is some opportunity to expand the footprint. The picture for reference, please be. This next slide has a lot on it, talking about the value of the partnership. So this is, this is plan A, we we do have a plan B, but this is really plan A where we're formalizing the commitment and the structure of the partnership. Um, and then there are some bullet points I'd just like to share. So, you know, things, it's it's location, 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 block fifty-six is, helps everyone achieve a very, very major goal in terms of both service to the community and education for our students. So um Miller East will not be used next year, so we that's those programs that were there are going to be relocated. Um, and the bond dollars that will be invested there were diverted to the Oak Street Campus building, the new structure over there. So the current value of Miller East is about two and a half million dollars. Um, and if we think about, if we act alone to try and build another Oak Street Campus type structure, it's going to cost about seven and a half million dollars. It will be a little bit larger footprint because we're looking for more square footage, ten thousand square feet is what we would hope, what we're targeting to get out of the partnership. So with our estimated cost so far, uh, the total value at the end of the project would be ten million dollars. And it would likely require some bond funds or capital project funds or a heck of a lot of grant funds to get us to that place. Um, so partnership, you know, in conceptually, all of the value brings to the students in terms of access to lab space, hands-on practical experience. Um, we wouldn't have that if we were to do a standalone ten thousand square foot academy space. So that's one sense of value and I don't have that um as a dollar figure on it. Um, the the district's contribution of property, real property to this, um, whatever size that might be. And with the optimal, so this is up to um ninety thousand square foot structure and that's all partners getting everything they dream of. In this and it may be scaled down uh if if it needs to be, but we're looking at a ninety thousand square foot um structure and with a total value of just over seventy million dollars. That our students would have access to all of the structure, all of the college support that they need and access to a real working center. Where clinical services are provided and dental and probably vision and some wellness. I think we've got a lot going on in this space, so.
Virginia Garcia has some ambitious goals for whatever this center means, but then seeing examples of that, I can't really predict it. And the other thing I would mention just to add to what Michelle's uh telling us, the partnership between P C C and H S D gets stronger every year. One of the things we have is most students that are accessing early college. And part of what we are trying to do is be more efficient with taxpayer dollars by sharing counseling space, sharing classroom space, sharing lab space. So it's not redundant and it goes from the morning until later at night. And so we think we can do that by cooperating across agents.
Thank you. Yeah, and I did have a question about um the funding piece.
Okay.
Because we're, we're poised to decide whether or not we're going to go for another bond for our district and maybe like maintenance, construction, movie. Um, but that wouldn't be any part of this.
Not at this time, not with the partnership.
So there's not a reliance on any uh of our effort to do that.
No, I I think what Michelle was going to do, if we were to do this on our own, we would have the bond for it. But with the with the gain share money that we have banked over at the city and with our investment that we've already made in the property that we own.
And how much of that gain share?
I want to say four and a half.
Yeah, it's four and a half now.
Yeah, we don't want to get it all. Property itself has great value to the project.
Right, proximity to the max and communities and the the rest of the supplemental services that are offered in the downtown. I think our partner's pretty excited about it.
And then I guess the the consultant or attorney we're hiring to help us get the MOU right. It's for us to also protect ourselves.
For sure. And and the attorney specializes in this and has has other exam and right now she works for us. And if if we. And if, if we advance the partnership, it would be like, like, that she would continue to represent us and then be C C Virginia Garcia would be on legal counsel table. And that's what she's so deliberate about. And in her experience, she's, her, her expertise is in multi-agency projects. And so she's been very clear about who she's been doing for right now. And then we're working as a collective companies. Uh, her and, and who owns the product. So right now. Other questions?
Sorry.
The next step would be to finalize the MOU and we would, part of bringing this to you tonight is so that our school board is supportive of this project and each step we take. And we would come to you likely with an MOU that would be signed by the school district in order to advance the project. And then we would, um, formalize who the leaders are of a steering committee that would be described in that MOU. And then, um, Michelle's part of this, but we're pursuing the property adjacent to our own.
And our steering committee members just like how we do live at the community, is it community at work or how do you get to that?
This one would be new for us. It would be a, um, members from PCC, Virginia Garcia and HSD, uh, leaders with the, the power to do things on behalf of a organization. And then there would be under that steering committee's leadership, one of the project management team that would be, we believe like a bonding team that's still in the school. There would be a group of people who know how to build buildings, who would come in and do that work. The steering committee would be people like executive meeting. And we could delegate to be participants and pay attention to that project. That's how we're with the Banport Commons.
Questions? I'll, I'll like, be open, start it.
Oh, I was gonna say, um, I have actually been, um, I actually knew all those people in the first picture of the MA program, the pilot MA, cause I was at my high school. And so there was like maybe like twelve of them, including my sis, my older sister. And so the program's actually grown like a lot and I see it. Um, there's like, it came from like twelve students to like over forty students that are interested in becoming medical assistants. Um, we've all been able to go to Virginia Garcia, be able to shadow like health professionals and be able to, um, to kind of get like a leg into the door of like healthcare. And I would say that we really enjoy, uh, going to Virginia University because we really love the mission that they have there. Um, and especially it's, uh, it's a great opportunity for a lot of bilingual, um, students to, uh, um, or they have space in healthcare. It's like, it was a really great, uh, I was actually there last Friday for, um, for like a long internship. So that was very fun. Um, I definitely am excited to see where this goes. And I'm also a little bitter that I won't be able to access a new building. Cause obviously I have to graduate and everything is done.
You could take classes at PCC and access. Pete, thank you for saying that. We're gonna, we're just connecting on this topic. In Virginia Garcia, it's important to recognize that they're our main partner who are getting hours and medical rounds. I'm sure I'm calling them the wrong thing, but hours on site in an actual clinic is BG. And so we have a lot of opportunity here with our HSD, um, Kaiser, but it's Virginia Garcia has figured out how to remove those barriers to get students on site. And so this is just affirmation of that partnership and how willing they are to do this. And all the different hospitals are having a, a hard time hiring people in all different areas. And so they're really willing to collaborate with us because they know how many students are coming up here. The system we want to serve. That's so cool. We have a connection. Thank you for your support in general for this. Over the years, it's been taken forever to get this going. And I just really appreciate you consistently being willing to hear the updates and support this work as you do it. Ten years from now, this is the type of project that I think will be like a beacon for how communities should pull resources and make workforce and education centers happen. I think it's going to be incredible.
Yeah. And I really love the multiple forgettable fact we sort of have going on. And that's, if, in my short time. Being able to work in the legislature, they talk a lot about creative funding and try to leverage more than what you have. And this is like a perfect example of. How you, how communities can do this, pull resources. We, we really are talking. Uh, some greater than parks here and, and three great partners. We all work well together. And yeah, I'm very excited with how we can pull these resources and create something pretty, uh, wonderful. So.
What ones? I know initially like we're block fifty-six, but we're going up to fifty-seven.
Block sixty-seven is a project called Peridian and it's managed by a firm called Rembold. And they've contracted out with a different, affordable housing, affordable housing group is called Related. And so there's a group doing affordable housing and then a group doing a crumb, a roaster and the retail on the ground floor. And that is all sort of market grade stuff and it's to make a. Beautiful downtown project. Ours has incorporated that theme of the health and education district, which has historically been a separate university and to all that it net, which is new. Missing partners, but ours being. Uh, onto the coattails of that formerly the health and education district and still the city of Hillsborough. Block sixty-seven is, I think, mostly focused on the retail, the, the market rate housing, a little bit of a.
I don't think you understand how much you may Travis is day by asking that. Trying to keep up. Desire to be a city planner. Epidemiology is dead. Health crisis.
Or gone opportunity.
Any other questions? All right. We'll move on to our loan action item for the evening. Uh, that the board directors approve entering into negotiations for a purchase and sale agreement with the final sale to be authorized at a later date.
Thank you.
It's been moved by me and seconded by Director Lopez that the board directors approve enter, entering into negotiations for a purchase and sale agreement. With the final sale to be authorized at a later date. Do any further discussion? Rose, please call it all.
Sheen Kim?
Hi.
Erica Lopez?
Hi.
Patrick Acquire?
Hi.
Monique Ward?
Hi.
Nancy Thomas?
Hi.
Mark Watson?
Hi. Ocean Carries?
All right, uh. On to discussion times, but, uh, which do you represent? If anything. Ten fifteen minutes before I left, so if anything like that today.
Um, well, um. You know, this week kind of been a little stressful since, uh, last week, since it's like AP testing national wide. So, um, so any student, um, out there listening, um, you know, study up, um. Got this. You know, we've worked for this day, to this be, um, yeah. Um, also I was during advisory or access time during, at my school, it was brought to my attention that, um, the synergy, um, platform of attendance, it doesn't like really. Um, um, I wouldn't say it, it was not really. It doesn't really like. I just, um, well, some of my classmates identify as other Q, uh, I name class. So when, you know, they don't. Go by the name of like, uh, what, um, synergy has, but like, um, the school district can't or the school can't change it because, you know, it has to be required to like, um. To change it, change it legally. So if a student doesn't prefer to go by the name, but by their. Name, you know, their nickname or name that they refer, how. Who like staff and like, uh, substitute, no. Um, they were getting really, you know, hmm, hmm. Uh, frustrated when, you know, they had to explain, uh, to a substitute why they don't go by the name of this, but this, and it's just. For me, it's just. Really frustrated that like, you know, there's not like. That opportunity for them to, you know, just. But the, their name, they, their preferred name called as what they would like. So, um, I don't know if there's like any, um. Way we could fix this, but it was, it's, it was, um, a big, uh. It's been a big concern to my advisory class and, um, probably also other classes as well.
We require it. Yeah, we, we have been working on this. So I'm interested to know. Maybe track down this one instance that you're talking about because, uh, in the OSB being the office for state performance, we've been talking about how to solve the problem without. The requirement that it be a legal name change. A student has a right that's protected that they could choose a pronoun or a name. Even if there's not a legal change to that. And then I think we just figured out how to make that available to substitutes and other staff, like viewing the roster.
I'm looking at Jordan. Yeah, so there's sort of multiple levels of it where student is on their preference and what their connection to, uh, how they want to, they want to tell about that. Um, and so, um, there's sort of three different sort of levels of that that they can choose and sort of, I was just getting that information out there. Um, for, uh, students to know that the, the subject piece is a difficult piece because you have somebody coming in, we've just got a call that morning. Get into a system and they care that so they don't have access to all the same information the normal teacher has. Um, but there are some ways we've been working on trying that.
A student or you could talk to a counselor. We have a supportive type of students in place who have changed their name or pronoun, want to. Change that in the system. So we have that.
And we'll start with gender support plans. So have them talk to their school counselor. They have the form and they have the access to be able to start the process. That doesn't, that requires them just activating.
Hmm, thank you. Please help me follow like our, the. We want to respond to your saying, I just wanted to share that a teammate of, of Jordan's team came and also spoke with our county leadership team that represents elementary middle and high, because we also want to make sure to get it right. So as he was sharing, like, here are some different ways that in synergy it could look. Um, the counselors were able to also provide feedback of like, you know, here, here's how we also can support the work. And then also make sure in synergy that it, it, that's for all students. I just wanted to say that. From the audience.
Please let me know if I can help you re-mix with anybody. I don't think that's yours.
Thank you. Yeah, that's it.
Wait, one more thing. Then I bet you're sorry you asked this question. But it's super important because the board just approved a strategic plan, which names that we want students to feel a sense of belonging and value in school. And the student group in the survey that replied that the least sense of belonging and affirmation in our schools, the students who identify as non-binary. And so when we approved the strategic plan, we named this as a goal. So if we make this work, this could be one technical change that will lead to students feeling affirmed and valued in our schools and in that way. You see somebody caring about the top of the, just to name that. Thank you, school board. Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you. Yeah, I can resonate with, um, that problem. I, I have actually been working like since October to get my, um, get that name change to the name I go by. And it's been like a long lengthy process that like, it's like touch and go. And I don't know what's going on, but like, um, I'm just going to continue to do my thing. Um. And so I would also like to talk about how, um, I am the, um, president of my high school student. So that miniage club, we're sold. And so this week we're really excited to put on our dance, we're gonna do the night bell. Yeah, I'm so excited and, um, I was actually running a little late to the meeting because I was like. Running to like change out of the clothes. I'm like covered in paint, but because I was at the table, it was like last minute, like posters and everything. So, um, we're gonna hopefully invite students from Liberty, middle high, we actually got the middle high, Maria Key to come and play for us. We got like all the students, like, I'm really excited about this. It's like the first thing. This is the first like dance that has been pulled off by like leadership. We have like no leadership experience. And we're able to pull it off and like, we put like all of our joint, like we don't know, um, kind of ideas of like, we'll figure it out. And so, um. I'm excited to help, um, help kids feel a little bit more warm in our dance or even just like, um, have just a little bit more fun while they're struggling with AP tests because. Um, it's been, uh, it's been really hard for a lot of students to meet you for like AP tests. It's just like, I kind of be like, hey, we made it, so we might as well dance. So, yeah.
Still want to hear a good chat, Ronnie?
I hope so.
Mike, do anything you want to.
I just say really quick, uh, this is why we have student reps on board. And the, just the topics that you bring up that. Um, just added links into so many of the issues that we're trying to problem solve. And I think you're solving yourself. Sure. You do have leadership experience. And you demonstrated all that. So, um, yeah, that's it. I'll have to.
Speaking of student reps, you're recruiting them right now. Figure that out still, right? Uh, fourth time, we'll start online. On the far left. Sheen, do you have anything to like that tonight?
Nothing for me. Did you?
Laura would like that. Monique, anything like that tonight?
No, nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, anything you want to add tonight?
Not, nothing in particular. Just thank you for all the good work. Very informative session.
Thank you. Erica, anything you want to add tonight?
Excited to go to the dance on Friday. Sorry to think about my outfit. Um, and then I, I also, I mean, I think that you, uh, me just talked about like, you've been on this journey to do this work for yourself. I think that's like, like Mike said, that's a great opportunity for us to have a moment, maybe do a little like detection of like. What, what was the process? How did it go? And like with Jordan and like, we, we have the people, you have our ears. So this is a great opportunity for us to learn. And figure it out, like, where are the gaps and that we're not seeing? And then how does it show up in like our student experience? Cause our students are like our customer. So how does this, where, where does that, we can get that feedback. And I think that would be great, but follow up to just say like, okay. Well, we did all that you were supposed to do, but then our system or our process maybe has a gap in there and how do we solve that? So I think that, um, that would, that would be, be great for us. And it's a metric that will be awesome for our, um, so you can get plans, um, to all the people there. Um, but yeah, that's all I have.
Thanks for the wild night. Yeah, uh, yeah. And, and to your point, uh. I shared earlier, I was in Chicago for my son's college graduation this weekend. Very proud of that moment. I think. The AP credits made all the difference in the world. So my daughter graduated on, on my son graduating in, well, in four years. My son graduated in four years. I don't think that would have been possible without the help they got. I think it made all the difference in the world. They, they, I think we still have work to do, especially in working. Uh, having those AP credits transfer in the, the most effective way. We've talked about this with the legislature and with. You know, so sometimes people have to take calculus again, even if they pass AP calc for some reason. Um, but the, so I think they both had to, you know, retake classes that they had AP credits for, but also gave them that safety net of not having to take. Nineteen credits one semester to try to catch up. They had, you know, enough sort of bank, but some of it, fifteen or twenty when you got there, so that. He was never crushed for a individual semester, that allowed him to get done in four years. So, yeah. Good luck with all the APs. So. Uh, I think that's about it. Oh, yes, I, and. Rose and I are still looking for a board member volunteers who would like to help interview student representatives for next year. We have a long list. And Erica, right? Okay. So we need to work out our schedule and calendar. I think one school has eight applicants, so.
What are we doing it?
We're trying to figure that out right now. Probably maybe even do it at that school.
Oh, probably can do.
For when there's eight, yeah.
Uh, so I remember last year, they had like an inter- information session.
Yeah.
Session for like student, current student reps with like, um, like applicants, um, are we still gonna be done?
You guys be interested in doing that?
Yeah, yeah. It would make my life a little different because we're going to probably do that, the interviews at half the schools. I, I will figure out a way. I guess that's been, uh. Interview back. The kids love.
Yeah.
You guys telling them about, uh, what it's like.
So maybe it doesn't have to be that day.
Could be a different day.
Right?
But.
You're not like sessionals before and beginning.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe just do it a different day.
Yeah, okay.
I won't try to get.
Do you have any leadership experience that you thought?
But I would love to do it. I guess I would do more than that. Okay. Looking at Mondays and Fridays. But it was a.
Alright.
The, we get to tell people.
Yes, please do not forget the vote.
Oh, yes.
And vote for the right people.
And literally somebody asked me today, like, when will, when will, one of the results going to be showing up is at like eight o'clock. I'm like, yeah, that's how it was today, not today. And that, I will, I will shamefully admit that I have not heard my validated, yeah. Because that was gone for so long, but whatever, yes. Timeless for tomorrow. And the person was like, you seem very weird when it's due at eight o'clock. It's not today, but we're good. We have a slow week.
And our project VHSB is on Saturday.
Yeah, Project VHSB, that, that really do remind us, Project VHSB is on Saturday, along with like four other things, so. For our sunscreen.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's really hot, right? Yeah. Alright, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.